Everybody had a chance to look at the minutes from last meeting? If there's no changes, I have a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
All moves, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Nicole, is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item is the bills. Is there any questions? If not, do I have a motion or changes? Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the bills.
Paul makes motion, is there a second?
No second.
Seconded by John, is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item is the delinquent bills. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the disconnect.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Jason, is there any other discussion? Nicole?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Any yes for me? Motion carries. Everybody had a chance to look at the July financials? You didn't see it?
I didn't see anything. Overlying.
I have a motion to accept the financials as presented?
I'll make a motion to accept the financials as presented.
Paul makes motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by John, is there any other discussion? Jason?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Any yes for me? Motion carries. Commissioners reports, we'll start with Paul tonight.
Okay, on electrical, Roy is finishing up a couple of projects that they got started. One project they started that they're just gonna kind of close up and finish up on next year. I think they had talked to, I guess Tim is here, they talked to you about finishing that project next year. Electrical, that's on your lot. Roy hasn't talked to you? So he hasn't talked to you? Okay. So they're doing some more projects that they're finishing up. They're just about finished with a project out by the subway to help, that would work with the looping electricity. And working also on, they had more electric come up and they're working at, kind of getting a plan for hopefully the transformer out by Anchor, as far as what the needs are on that. And he's also working on getting the supplies for the light poles, for the power on the light poles. Hopefully get all the Christmas decorations working. They, I believe they're done with the cap round. And load controls, I talked to Abby today, she said that they're coming in slower now. So if you haven't had your load controls put in yet, please call the city office. They will maybe try calling some people, but if they can't get ahold of you, at some point there will be a $50 charge for those people that aren't being proactive to put their load controls in. So be proactive and call in and get that done, please. Because that will be a $50 charge, once we shut that off. Once you've made an attempt to get everybody on a load control, then that'll be, there'll be a charge put in then for those that don't want to do it or bucking it. So please call the city to get that taken care of. Beautification, I don't have anything new on that. So, but I will talk to Roy about, he was supposed to talk to you, so. I'll follow up on that, okay? So he should come talk to you on what he plans on doing with that wire out there. So I'll be sure he gets over and talks to you. You know what I'm talking about, right? Yep, yep. The wire that they, oh, I'm sorry. The wire that they bored in, over there on the lot, they're gonna finish that up next year. So there, he's supposed to talk to you as far as how they're gonna enclose that for the winter. So it's not gonna be, you don't have to worry about backing into it or doing anything with that. But I'll make sure he gets over and talks to you about that, okay? And I know they did find a problem over there, right, on one of the poles for you? So everything seemed like it's working okay now?
Yeah, we've been agreeing, there's still that problem with turning a light on and stuff. It's burnt, it just sits there.
Okay, so.
When it's good and dry, everything works fine.
When Roy comes over, be sure to let him know that, okay? Please, so that he, so he can check into that. So, okay? And that's, I guess, all I have. John?
I talked to Jay, and he's talked to the, to Roy, and apparently the railroad is doing, redoing the intersection out here in Caledonia. So they're trying to do both those at the same time, but right now that plan is happening right during beet harvest. So there will not be allowed any truck traffic through here, so we're gonna have to divert them south to Gable Road and over to 200. But Jay was saying they're gonna need signs to help them indicate that there's need to for that truck traffic. He was gonna try to get ahold of somebody at the railroad, see if they can try to push it up to try to avoid the beet harvest, because that's gonna be a, kind of a major pickup for them which they usually go through on Caledonia. But yeah, Jay was thinking maybe, I don't know if he said specifically how many signs he would need, but they'd need something out by interstate at least for sure, and then showing the need toward relevant. And then, on top of that, Paul, he was mentioning off the Riverwalk that the sign out there, they were having some issues with the electrical on the Riverwalk signs. And then they wanted to check into doing, instead of doing mulch, seeding some of that very under grass because it's growing a lot of weeds and whatnot up around that sign. So it'd make it a lot easier for upkeep and mowing. And then, I did talk to Bambi and MSU about the armory. That's where I got some of that on the agenda. Bambi has indicated there's roof leaks in the kitchen and also in the vault in that southeast classroom. And there's several, several of the windows that are still leaking water and air due to not having the proper flashing eye when they were installed originally. This plan is still to replace, redo the window in the west, middle west classroom in October. And then she also indicated they're planning to move forward with the kitchen remodel. And they'd be replacing the flooring, the stainless steel cabinets, and would also be a possibility once they get all the funding complete, they're working on getting grants ready for that. So once that's complete, January 15th at the latest, it would be a full commercial kitchen at that point. And I did talk to Jay about the weaves on the west side, did they get over and get them fixed? Yeah. Uh, yeah, and they wanted to, that's part of the agenda here, looking at doing a little different setup on the lease. I won't get into that too much, I'll wait till that comes around. But they indicated to me, and I think also Jason, that they wanna, their, their plan is to make a commitment to Hillsborough. Also, they wanna stay here long-term and just wanna make sure that they have that ability if they're gonna make all these improvements that they're gonna have a lease on in the long-term as well, so. So I just wanted to reiterate that, that I feel like they're presenting a plan that indicates they wanna be here long-term, so. Keep that in mind when we're going over that.
Okay, anything else, John?
Uh, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Jason?
I have nothing.
Nicole?
Nothing from the airport, the water sewer side. Actually stopped by, talked to Steve Swansonetti, who has today about the annual utility rate survey. And we went through the books, and I know the last meeting Casey had touched on some of our deficits within our budget. And looking at the water rates, the residential seems to be that Hillsborough is pretty much in the middle, but on the commercial side, it's on the lower end, so everyone's really charging a lot more than what we are. So looking for the budget and these rates, we probably are gonna have to look at the commercial water rates, and we might have to raise those a little bit. And that's, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Nicole. On the beautification side, it sounds like trees should be getting taken out by cars sometime later this month or early next month. And they were able to give us a bid for stump removal that was cheaper or close to what we were gonna pay to rent one, so we're gonna go ahead and go with that to get the stumps removed. The planning and zoning held off, and so they had met today, just because there wasn't enough members to meet last Monday. So there's a couple items, nothing that needs to take any action. Just to give you, be aware of it, the county is looking at adding a parking lot on the west side of their property between First and Caledonia. They came and asked to have another access point put into Caledonia, so coming off the parking lot, coming into Caledonia, planning and zoning felt that that would not be a good idea to add another access point onto Caledonia, there's enough right in, because there's Second Street Southwest, there's Second and a Half Street Southwest right there in that same area. So they're asking to go back and rethink about that to maybe possibly come out on Second and, Second and a Half Street Northwest. They're also asking, or looking at possibility of adding a street light on the corner of First Avenue Northwest and Third Street Northwest for some lighting concerns that they had. And so, um, nothing is concrete there, they're gonna go back and give some other options as well, but you guys can pass the maps around and see. And then they were presented with the Steen's and subdivision as well. And so they, there's a lot of questions that they had, but they asked for us to move forward on the next steps of that. They said it would be favorable to moving forward of it. And so that would be, the next steps would to have JR and Steve work on the annexing and doing all that, if that was the case. I did see they're here tonight, if you guys wanna, Ryan, if you had anything you want to talk about?
Nope.
Okay. Well, they were out here earlier, but that would be the next step, is to look at starting the annexation process and making sure that we have water and sewer and stuff available for it, so. And this would be kitty corner from the north, or excuse me, southeast corner, southeast corner of town. It looks like it's going from Post Road all the way down to where Dick offs have built their house. There's about seven acres in the track. Zach cracked JR, the next steps would be to get all the paperwork and hearings and all of that. We just need approval to vote, if you guys are okay with that, for JR to start working on that and Steve to start working on it.
So it's to do what, build something or?
Annex it in to build a house on it.
Okay, and you said it was over by, um,
Yep, just north of. The way it looks on the lot right now, it's one. But I had heard possibly three, but as of right now, it's one lot. Seven acres, yep. So if everybody's okay with that, I just need a motion to approve moving forward to that annexation procedure or process and zoning.
Planning and zoning have the final say on that thing?
No, you guys have the final say. So the process would be first, they would have their hearings, and then it would come here for the final approval.
I'll make the motion to proceed with the annexation process.
Is there a second? Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Paul makes, seconds motion, is there any other discussion? Paul?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Any yes for me? Motion carries. The other item is they've been working still, they haven't come up with a solution on the campers or people living in campers, and so they're still working on that process. JR, do you have anything for tonight? Okay. Abby, do you have anything from auditor's office?
Nope, not tonight.
Okay. Anything from the sheriff's office? Okay. We'll move on down to the supervisor superintendent role for that position that we had talked about for Jay and Zach. You guys had some time to think about it. What are your thoughts on how we should move forward?
Well, I feel we're not having any luck finding a superintendent. I think we need to move forward with this, I think we may still need to be looking for a superintendent down the road, or some, something on that lines. But I'm more willing to give it a try for six months or so, and whatever you guys feel is a comfortable amount of time to, to give it a try to see how it works for you and for us. I don't know if you think six months would be adequate, or, and come back and revisit it, or you wanna go longer or shorter? Well, that's just my opinion, I don't know what everybody else thinks, you know? But I think it gets you, if it doesn't work for you, it doesn't lock into, oh, here. You know, and if it doesn't work out, it doesn't work out. But if it works great, well, then we can just, you know, we can just review it again after six months. And if everybody's going good and it's working out, right, let's give it a try.
How long have you guys been doing a lot of that supervisory work now?
My thought is, I think they're doing a good job. Haven't heard any complaints since they've been acting that way, and I honestly don't think we have the money in our budget to pay us a regular.
I think if they have stepped up and split those, I have seen no issues and heard no issues about what they've been doing. If they've already been pretty much taking over the tasks, I would agree with Jason. I, I don't think we need to look for a superintendent at all. But I do think that they have been graciously been taking these tasks in. Personally, for myself, I can see giving them each an increase, taking out the public works supervisor position, relooking at the full-time public works that we had in here, maybe possibly putting that one aside, and potentially looking at taking the COLA out of our budget.
Taking what out?
The COLA. That would be a cost of living adjustment, because everyone's been getting these bumps up, and we're running at deficits. But this would give an opportunity for each of them to all have increases. But this would also help and kind of shave some of that off the surface. That's just my opinion.
You're saying the raises just for the supervisor or for the whole?
Well, the other ones have been bumped up, and these two have been splitting a position that haven't been bumped up.
Yeah, I was just making sure, I heard you right.
Yep. But I'm open to your thoughts and opinions.
I mean, from what I've heard, which I'll say is pretty limited, but it sounds like, like you guys said, it's going well for people I've talked to, so. And, yeah, I mean, it could be a lot for one person to oversee all three of those areas. People take that role on, it definitely helps delegate it, obviously adds no workload to their day. But rather than having one person trying to cover three sections, you know, obviously more than that, but it gets to be a lot for a person too as well. I guess I won't comment on budget stuff just yet, but.
You got other thoughts?
Yeah, I would say like if the first meeting in April would readdress it, it'd be over seven months.
So generally, Nicole, if we give a raise, we haven't in the past given, like, if they're on probation or if they've gotten another increase for it, for a new position, we have not given a, the cost of living or that yearly added on.
Right, we've just had the initials, and then the bumps, and then the percentage, and then the COLA. And like, it keeps going up and looking at our budget, our budget keeps shrinking. And so somewhere, we're gonna have to seal in all those gaps.
Which if we don't hire, like I said, there was an option that we could hire another public works. If we don't hire that, will save us some funds as well.
Well, that's just it, it would be up to them to decipher, you know, is an extra one needed or not? Or is what they have right now in those positions enough? I don't know. But if they're taking on all of this extra work, I think it's due process that they also are kind of in the same level playing field when they're doing more work too.
Right. So they had requested eight, was there, what they had come back with, is that something that you guys want? And if so, from what I'm hearing, you just need to make a motion to have a probationary of six or seven months, if that's what you want to do, and then what the actual raise would be.
Does that sound something that's, would be a preference? That way after six months, you can say it isn't good, or I love it and stay?
So are you going six months from when they started essentially doing the job after Jim was gone? Or are you starting to six months from today?
My assumption is a six months starting from today.
That would be my assumption as well. Okay, any other discussion, or do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion to have them be in the supervisory position, six months, and then we'll relook at it again with the $8, with the $8 raise.
I'll second that.
Moved by Paul, seconded by Nicole, is there any other discussion? JR, Zach, do you have anything that you wanna? Do you have anything you want to add in?
I don't.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion?
Just curious, if that $8 started after the six probation, six month probationary period?
No, it would start today.
Okay. Just was unclear, sorry.
If the, in six months, we decide that it's not gonna work, what happens to the, the raise?
They wouldn't be in that position, so then. Any other discussion? Jason?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Any yes for me? Motion carries. Next item is the rate property discussion.
I was just gonna say, what date would that six month?
It'd start in this pay period, so.
It should be today. Today's the first of the new pay period.
John? You have the rate discussion?
Oh, yeah, so. The first item would be that sidewalk and manhole, so Steve did say there were plenty of rings there that they could lower it, or it could be lowered. Obviously, that's part of it is kind of in the, or I should say, kind of, it is in the city. city right away from the plan as I saw. As far as Tim wants to replace that concrete outside his shop, so if we need to get that sidewalk fixed so that he can use that entrance into the one overhead door, we kind of need to do that at the same time so that they can grade that concrete properly down there. Now, as far as who is, how we want to handle that, I guess in the city, we just give permission to that? And I guess, Tim, I don't know what, what your thoughts are on, you know, if you've mentioned that concrete company thought they could fix that sidewalk. You've mentioned that concrete company you've been talking to, they felt like they could fix it, they were given the okay to fix it because there are concrete spaces in there that can be removed.
They've got to take some rings off and work with that down.
Yeah. Yeah, some, what did you say, a foot? It could be lowered on those.
I think Steve said there were seven rings, six or seven rings that it go down. I don't know how big they are.
I think it's somewhere in the vicinity of a foot that it could be lowered. That manhole could be lowered, the manhole lift could be lowered by a foot. So that could, that could definitely help, yeah, definitely help your current situation.
Yeah, if you looked at it, you could, you know, swivel and stuff, it would be expect rates now.
Yeah, so then that would affect the sidewalk, you know, in art itself or ways to.
We have to lend that driveway into that manhole as well.
Yeah.
For it to just put forward. Who's going to do any good for me to put concrete in when that manhole sets up now?
Right.
Take your vehicle drive through there, we're doing that much left of the main. You see now why it was?
Yeah, I do.
So it makes that salt door mine useless really for anything of any size.
Right. So do we want to, do you want to come up with a plan on how that's graded and then we try to?
Should I follow it?
Do you want to come up with a plan and how you want to grade it from your door down to the sidewalk?
I think I talked to the man, he would have said, see, you've got that right.
Yeah.
The city should be responsible for that part of it.
For lowering that manhole.
Doing that kind of bad work there. But I already showed you that I got in that damn deal there when I got the concrete to do my concrete without the, doing any of that math. That's what I have, because the city should be responsible for that manhole lowering and fixing that, and for the concrete and the labor there.
Can you, can you split that out for us?
By me?
Can you split that out for us on what our portion of the cost would be?
Yeah, we can see maybe break that part to give you that.
Yeah. That's what I'd like to see.
Yep.
But I believe it's doable, it's just we need to work together and get it figured out with your, what you're planning for your slab and what we need to do with that sidewalk.
Probably make a sketch or something, nothing else.
Yeah.
I think that's where we're at there, Tim. I think if he can get that for us, that's where we're at. So I don't know how long, how long you think it would take him to get that for us. No, for him to get that estimate for that part, that portion.
Yeah, get an estimate for lowering that manhole.
Yeah, right. Yep. So if he can get us a cost on that, on what it would be, so we can get that.
He'll probably have to go back to the concrete, please.
Just get, get what he, just have him bid it so we, so we know what our portion would be.
Yeah.
Yeah?
I'll try and get him to do that.
Okay. Is there anything else on that, Tim, or?
I haven't seen that, no.
Okay.
I'll put that over, it might be there next one. We just got to get that, that grade, so.
What?
Figure out how much that's going to cost.
Thank you.
I guess the other thing is my driveway, I sure liked that driveway back in my salt, salt slot that they took off when I did that street. They said they're going to put every doorway back, but they did not. There's a little map there showing that driveway's gone and the back page for that one.
This one?
I'm not, I can't see, but there's a one, but if you go to the very back page, I just got to put that. During the, so that on there is on?
I did look at the plans, they did not show it on the new, when they redid it in 2008, they did not show that driveway on the plan.
I don't know why they took it out, but yeah.
Yeah.
This one here, you can see, shows the driveway gone right there.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know why they took it out or why they omitted it. They put it in for all the big locks, but didn't put it back in for mine.
And Steve never really answered that question, why, why they wanted to put one there if there was one there already.
And it wasn't really at the city project, it was a DOT project.
Yeah. Oh, and it decided a rule of the city though?
It wasn't because it was all DOT, all that engineering, everything was done by DOT. The only thing that the city had in on the project was the sewer and the storm sewer.
Yeah. Well, I know it wasn't on the DOT plans, I guess, when I reviewed it, that driveway was omitted.
Correct.
I don't know if that would have been, or they had their open meetings, if you'd have noticed on their plan said it was omitted, that they would have added it back in, but that would have been back in 2006, 2007. Did you get that? So like the DOT, when they do their, when they redo something like this, they have their open meetings? That would have been the time to kind of look at the plans and see if they'd omitted something that you'd wanted?
They talked about, they talked about having a roll back curve, so it wouldn't be an issue, but then when they poured everything, they, they did it, they said this is what you did to take your lead. This one out.
Yeah.
In fact, that engineer that did that, that Olson, he said, make sure you get that in there because it'll make your lot work tomorrow. And then when you turned around, when they were doing that curve, it was already gone, poof.
Right.
Yeah.
There seemed to be some miscommunication there between engineer and contractor that ended up doing that.
I don't know who, who did it or why it was done, but it never got put back.
Yeah, I don't even remember who the contractor was.
I believe it was, um, the one that did, the new development did, which was Something Brothers.
Celine?
Celine Brothers, yep.
I was going to say Celine.
Because I remember there was a lot of paperwork on that, that Celine was in court in a lot of different things. Okay. Anything else on that? Okay. The other item?
What do we want to do on that? I'm not going to do anything with it, Ben, or?
You're going to get a price number, so you can email that.
No, on the curb, on the approach.
Oh, the approach?
We know.
On the approach, what do you want to do on that item? And at this point, I don't think you allow to do it on that.
He filled out my concrete, that's what he did all his life, is put in curb and gutter and stuff like that, so he possibly get down the left too. You want me to get a price from him?
I don't know, like, I guess I'm kind of up in the air on that, that item, I'm not really sure how that's handled. If the DOT did it.
You'd have to talk to the district engineer, which I have his contact, I can send it to you.
You said you had a contact there?
Mm-hmm.
Send that over to me, I'll try to get it over. I'll talk to the district engineer at DOT and see what they say.
Okay. The other item?
All right. So the other one, uh, this is regarding the, I know this has probably been gone over quite a bit prior to my time as well, but the issue where railroad believes that, at least from what Tim told me and from misinformation, that the railroad still believes that Tim is encroaching on their property. And I kind of went back and looked at last year's, first one I saw, I think it was in E-Row with its cable, but made. The beautification committee had a number 2023002, word right implement, and the item just said need to know what was complained about. Then there's a 2023003, said the railroad will be sending encroachment letter, and also a 2023004, saying their railroad will be sending, sending encroachment letters. Now, the following months, those numbers all disappeared, and then in October, 2023002 has an address of 218 Second Street South List. So I'm not sure what happened there, why we have the same number for two different items, especially when we're dealing with what would be legal action items, I guess you could say eventually. Be careful on how we number those items. But I guess the question is, did anybody ever notify the railroad that rights have all their equipment on their property? Equipment that was there was somebody else and has now been cleaned up. Because my understanding, the railroad is saying that you guys can't move forward with any sort of purchase agreement until that stuff's taken care of, but as far as they know in their mind, nothing's been taken care of.
They have, never have been, and they, on human miles.
But they're saying there's something there because that's what their records are telling them, they didn't send somebody else here to even look at it.
Can we, can we email D? Is that the one, just D?
D is the one, yeah, he sent an email and included that very hot email.
So we could send a, we could send an email to her.
I have any of them.
No, I said we could. I don't know if it'll help, but we could send it.
Well, Levi, he did it to start with, with your beautification deal, and that's what started all, saying I was encroaching on. The pictures in here, there's one picture of mine where that combine is and then the trailers, that was mine, but the other stuff is not. You knew there was Rob Allerick stuff because you've been here how many years, you knew it wasn't mine, but yet I seen in the minutes of beautification that you said you guys were going to get an encroachment letter and send this to the railroad, and Levi even admitted at one of your meetings that he did it. So it's up to you guys to straighten this out.
Tim? To clarify, the question that was originally sent to the railroad was, is there a lease or is there somebody that owns that property to yourself?
That isn't the way she put it.
That was the original email that was sent.
Maybe that was your intent, but if she didn't take it that way, then now we have this problem. Now we have to cure this problem.
That's, that's why I'm asking, who do we, do we have to, because you've been corresponding with this D?
Yeah.
So we can.
That's your first try, same, as you go better, people.
Yep. Well, I, we can try that.
I think we should, I think as a company, Mike, Darren, and me and the wife and all the way, need a written apology for what you guys put us through for last year.
Levi, I tell you.
But the simple fact, just come and ask me where my property lines are. There's a map of this little town here there, and it shows what focus filed in important up here in the field, and it shows the exact line, you can see the little red combine at the end on the south. You know, it wouldn't have been very hard, we could have kept all this in-house and wouldn't have to go to the railroad and stuff like that. Make a call statements to rail, or I think there might be penalties for that too.
Levi, I understand what you're saying, I, I agree that your, what your email was worded to them, that we were trying to get information, but the way the railroad took it and came back is that all of a sudden they felt like there was something going on that shouldn't happen there. That's kind of what I got out of the emails.
There was also an email that I had sent to them that also said, that I don't believe it's Tim Wright's property that is on there.
I'm just saying, I, I saw what you said and hearing what Tim's saying, is somebody still at the railroad believes that there is an issue with the, with that property.
Who are those emails to, you know?
Um, well, I think it was this string here that, uh, there was a few more emails on this, wasn't there, Tim?
Pardon me?
This string that, you'd think the first couple of emails, but there was like four or five more emails. There were four or five more emails on this string.
Oh, yeah, I got a lot of emails. I got over that, I think it's Kathy's back there, so.
Yeah, so it was between the.
You shared the email that you guys sent her and she said you couldn't do that, so.
Yeah. There's D, D and then Kathy, Kathy was the one trying to handle the sale.
She was the one with sales department, but she is the one that's been with the encroachment part. She even sent the brilliant and hot department, I think it started the shop to inspect the property and check it all out.
Right.
So she took it seriously, what you guys did. And now I'm vandalizing, because I got to work with them. That road that goes back to their thing is not a public road, that's my private property. I let the railroad use it, going back to their people there.
You're talking on the.
There's no road on that map at all. That's my personal road, towards my, into the shop.
Are you talking on this west side?
Me and the railroad.
On the west side of your building there, between the railroad and the building?
When it comes in off the 200.
200, oh, okay, got you.
If you don't cheat on that map, we.
Is that the one that goes straight across First Avenue? Like going straight across from First Avenue?
It's going straight across from here. It says dead end on Forest, that fine driveway comes in like force going on. But the railroad's been using it, they filled in this couple of the tracks, some of those tracks, people in that.
Do you have, you have a copy of that email?
Levi, I do, yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to see that, you know?
You guys want it?
Because you, you said, the way it was worded by you, it wasn't, we weren't pointing the finger at, yeah.
The way I read it, it started out kind of like with Levi saying, what is, this is you guys' property as at least, who owned it, was the question. And then I think Levi made the comment, well, there's, there's items on there that needed to be removed, and I think in some of that confusion, all of a sudden those right implements own it, own that lands, and I think that's kind of where, that's why I was looking back at these beautification minutes to see kind of how that progressed. So I don't remember which, which meeting it was that you came to last year, Tim? Which meeting was it that you came to last year, that beautification?
City commission.
So the city commission, remember, okay.
So I do have the, one of the emails, Thursday, November 2nd, 2023. Railroad says, we've talked to Tim, given us information about his property, I need to have him review, I'll be back in touch once they have a chance to review it. Levi says, I don't believe Tim is the one that has the machines on the VNSF property, it is another person, but this D person, whoever it is, are you still having issues with her?
Pardon me?
Are you still having issues with D?
Who?
The lady with the, um, the railroad?
Yeah, she said they emailed us, Frim, when my son inquired about buying them off, yeah, they're not, they're still encroaching.
Yeah, because she says, here, I'll be back in touch.
Over here, you.
We should, we should tell her, we study.
So this has been directed by you?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else on this?
It's like I said, we better get a written apology from you guys too for starting all this mess. You as a case, or should check into things before they do it to see what the reappearance can happen or what can happen when you do it, it would affect people's lives tremendously. I don't think you really care to be with Levi. You're not even listening.
I'm listening to you, Tim. Is there anything else?
I have, that's all I have.
So we're going to, so we're going to, somebody's going to reach out to D then, or what do we want to?
I'll have Casey.
I can call her.
I'll have Casey, I think would be our best option.
Casey, perfect. Because yeah, you want to purchase this, this open land, right? You want to purchase the one that had.
I can't hear you.
You want to, you want to purchase the one that already had stuff on, right? This is the one? And that's what they're getting.
Mine, mine is all in the yellow.
Yep.
That I own. Here's my combine, that's my line.
Now, one picture shows that no, my equipment's beyond that, but Cory inquired about these
two.
Okay.
They used to be all ball plants, one was a mobile and one was skelly ball plant. They had tanks there years ago.
And they won't release it?
I don't know, we haven't heard no more from them, so.
Okay.
Cory's emailed a couple of times and he hasn't said anymore.
Okay.
You may ignore that, Abby.
Okay, new business. We have the street closures for our saviors. They're asking for September eighth, which is their rally Sunday. And then they're also asking for September eleventh from three to nine, which is a Wednesday. They're gonna have bouncy houses and stuff in there for the kids. And that would be on the street, which would be first, second, second, second street northeast.
And who does the, like, puts up the barriers and stuff?
They generally do and then we put, the guys will give them signs generally to put out. They set them on the curb and then when they're ready to close it, they just move it. Similar to what we do out here.
Do they give in hours on September eighth?
Um, till like two o'clock. I assume by the time they get things tore down.
So both dates during the day?
Yes.
But the one is in the morning.
One's in the morning from, I assume they start about eight o'clock.
Two P M.
Till about two P M.
I'm, I'll make a motion to approve the closures on September eighth and eleventh. September eighth was from the morning until two P M and then uh, on the eleventh from three to nine. Both of those closures on second street northeast.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We'll invite Paul, seconded by John. Any other discussion? John?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Any yes for me? Motion carried. Next item is the Mayville State daycare, daycare discussions. Uh, the first item is the armory event cleaning. John?
So I talked to Bambi and uh, I forget what the, what's the gal's name at MSU?
What was that?
What's your, what's the gal's name at MSU?
Jessie.
Jessie. Um, so with the event stuff, we need to figure out a plan going forward and, you know, having a building. You know, the, I should say the uh, gymnasium part and the entryway, you know, somewhat uh would be our responsibility and not so much on them to clean it because they don't use that gym other than a few times in the winter time. And also that gymnasium would have to be cleaned either by whoever's using it prior to that event. Or it'd have to be, you know, something in the city if we hired somebody to clean it or something along that line. Otherwise it starts looking poorly on the MSU development. Uh, group that's, you know, it's really not their uh duty to claim that, that believe in this, even in the lease agreement, it kind of indicates that the that the city would be taking care of the cleaning or events. So I don't know if the current way we have the rental agreement set up really shows that, you know, and uh, and whether, how we determine who's gonna determine and how we determine that it's been properly cleaned and for events and then who goes in after and cleans after the events. And also trying to restrict how much dirtiness happens, I guess, during the event because it sounds like a few events that's been leaving mess in the hallway. And MSU shows up on Monday morning at six thirty and they have beer cans and everything scattered all over the hallway. Does not reflect very well to the parents that are bringing their toddlers and preschool kids to that.
May you propose you do?
I guess to me it seems like a clean crew would be a way to go and charge that to the rental fee or as part of the rental fee. I don't know what the uh, going rates are on cleaning crews, but right now the rental fee is what, three hundred?
Does Alicia's cleaning do anything at the army right now?
No.
Would they be willing to do that?
He was the one that said it's just a gal and her younger age son, isn't it? That does that work?
I would inquire with them, but I didn't.
I don't think they, okay.
But just, I mean, I'm talking just before and after events.
I know, I know, I'm pretty sure we, if I remember right, we asked them, they weren't interested.
We've asked a lot of people if they were to try to get it cleaned and we haven't been able to find anybody.
Even some of those bigger outfits on the party?
We sent out bids and asked and most of them aren't willing to come up here. Especially on a special event on a weekend.
Yeah.
I do know that the last, I'm sure some of you guys heard that after the last rental that they said were just forfeiting it. They forfeited the deposit and said, you guys can clean it.
That's where our concern came in, so it was forfeited.
Thanks for coming, Tim.
But then nobody came to clean it, so when I showed up at six thirty Monday morning, I had to come over right away and take pictures of everything before I started cleaning. There were beer cans and liquor cups outside. The hallways were full of spilled beverages with dirt on top of them. The bathroom had feminine products all over the floor. The entryway carpet had to be shampooed because there was so much liquor spilled in it. It smelled like a brewery. So I had to spend the first three hours of my day explaining to parents why the building smelled like liquor and was very dirty when somebody else was supposed to be responsible for cleaning it. So I did all of the cleaning except for the gym. So I'm the one that cleaned all the bathrooms, all the hallways, the kitchen was terrible. Um, I shampooed the carpets. I went outside and cleaned up the cigarette butts and the alcohol cups. So that's where if they forfeit it, then there needs to be a plan for somebody to come in and clean when they do forfeit it.
I think part of it is we probably need to up the, the deposit to help with that, deter them. Cause it's a three hundred dollar rental plus a three hundred dollar deposit.
The, the concern I have though is if you still even up it, you know, and they're like just forfeit it and Bambi still start cleaning it.
But at least we can, three hundred dollars is not gonna get a company to come in on the dime. So we'd have to find a company that we're gonna pay dearly for to come in at will and get it cleaned.
Bambi, you're usually typically the one that does the cleaning of after all these events, right?
No, this is the first time where it's never been cleaned. Every person that's right there, they'll maybe think here or there, we gotta just quick mop, you know, five minutes. This is the first time where.
They had to do excessive.
I spent, when I say I'm not exaggerating, I spent three hours doing nothing but cleaning the building to get it back to the way we left it on Friday.
And which we didn't, my understanding is you guys didn't find out till Friday that they were.
Right, they called in end of, cause we had already switched to our summer hours, so they called at like eleven fifty, forty-five and said, we're for, or you can keep our deposit. We're not cleaning after the event. And you say to that when you get that phone call.
And I'd prefer to be more prudent, like somehow or another rebound the company that would agree, you know. We usually know about these events fairly well ahead of time, right? And it's not usually coming in week before.
Correct.
But again, it's probably, well, how much can we pay somebody to do that?
But that's what the deposit would be for is that.
Right.
So what are you guys willing to up the deposit to so that it's covered if?
If they forfeit it.
If they forfeit it, or if it's not cleaned to expectations. Which then we need somebody to check it after the event to make sure that we're calling right away to get it cleaned.
Whose responsibility is for checking it on Sunday?
That's.
Buildings and ground portfolio?
Or we could.
Problem there is if no one's putting in bids to clean it and you up it and they still forfeit or whatever, it's still gonna fall on somebody and I don't know if you want putting bids in if anyone's gonna come clean it willingly to like up the service, you know what I mean? Like if they don't want the contract at all, are they gonna come around one time to clean?
Right, that's the other, you know, the only thing we could, and I'm not saying that I wanna add it on to the public works guys, but we do have them come in on Sundays. And Saturdays, that could be, if we know there's an event, they could check on it when they're making their rounds, cause we have that one person that's on. Not saying that that's our best option either, but otherwise we gotta find somebody else to.
Have you ever thought about hiring a janitor again down there?
You looking?
Jason's looking for volunteers.
He always takes the life of Ray. Well, maybe we do need Ray.
Well, after you left Ray, nobody else wanted to take the job, although we had the one and then after he left, we didn't have anybody after that.
He was really good too. He always had candy for kids. Talk, he brings a little chance for all that time.
Are you looking for a job, Ray?
Well, I'm like, how much are you willing to pay?
What are you asking?
He said yes.
Yes.
We'll give you all the coffee and diet coke you need.
You'd be careful there, he drinks a lot of coke.
Did he drink more than twenty-five dollars every one hour?
Uh, something else I wanna bring up too is the before the event thing. We've had two events now that have both complained about the way the gym looked and then complained to me that I didn't clean it, but I wasn't the one responsible for cleaning it. We don't use the gym in the summer and one was softball, just took their stuff off till the mess was still there from them. But this last one, they were upset at me because they had to mop part of the gym. And I said, that gym hasn't been used since the last wedding and they were upset being that they're like, well, that's a month ago. You should have cleaned it by now. We're not cleaning the gym when we're not using the gym. We mop the hallways every day. We clean entryways every day. But we don't clean the gym when we're not using. It's different in the winter time. We will clean the gym because we do use the gym quite a bit in the winter when the kids can't go outside. So we will then, but like this whole summer, we've maybe been in there a couple of times just to let them run. But we don't use it in the summer, so we shouldn't be responsible to have to mop it. And I mean, yeah, there's gonna be dust bunnies in that in there because if it's not used, there's no motion to roll this up around, but I don't want our program getting that bad rep that we're not taking care of what we're using because we are, we're not using the gym.
Or there's another option that we could do is just not rent out the armory anymore.
And I'm not advocating that either.
JR's thinking. Where are we gonna have our?
You just have to raise the deposit enough that it's cost prohibitive that they're gonna do it.
Right.
It's a penalty if you don't do it, three hundred bucks. And I'm reading the agreement. I wish we had like slightly different languages. They used us. They, they didn't clean because they thought only, only cost three hundred dollars. So be it. No, you were actually legally required to clean it. If we, we hired someone to do it, we'd charge you for it. So find out what that dollar amount is would save. If the deposit's a thousand dollars, I'll be, I'll be scrubbing. I'd clean it. I mean, they wouldn't leave it that way. It would make it cost prohibitive. That's my thought.
I see where you're going.
We charge so much that hey, we have so much money in the line. And you're at risk. It's like, it's like an apartment lease. I got a security deposit. I'm shampooing carpets. I'm cleaning shelves. I'm moving out the fridge for the first time. I like to clean behind the door.
So you're also saying that we need to change the agreement?
I would update the lease. I, I change it. So maybe a higher deposit. I'm just giving them a punch list of did you sweep the floors? Did you mop this? Did you remove all beer cans from the garages? Did you remove all beer cans from, gosh, those there?
There's a one for there?
I don't use a punch list, no.
I thought there was. That must be for here.
When we talked about.
That's one in the ten.
Got it.
That one doesn't get rented as much within its, not as.
Way less beer in this one too, so. That's my thought. I don't know.
And there should be a rule in there too that like the alcohol is central out in the hallway, front entry.
People going to the bathrooms and stuff.
Yeah, they go in the bathrooms. Really, but I just.
It happens. It gets hot in there. People walk outside with their beer to cool off. I mean, it, you can't really stop that.
I'm just saying.
Unless you're gonna have people.
They're supposed to have security there, right?
They have, they have their requirement of one, right?
They're only required to have one.
Yeah.
I think it's prudent to have a game that has the alcohol. If there's somebody that watches the build in there because then that gives us opportunity to hold it. It's not even a follow.
I'd have as a punch aside and just empty the bathroom garages because there's always beer cans out there. I learned that after the H B events or other things we mentioned. Kids find these things.
They find anything.
Well, can we, can we put, can we put out something for bids if we're looking for somebody to
We can still do that.
To inspect, you know, to, so I, I guess the biggest thing is who's gonna check it before? And then who is gonna, who, who would be available if needed afterward?
Bambi, would you be willing to check it before so that you're saying yes? Would you be willing to check before the event saying that it is cleaned and ready for the renters?
Yeah.
So there's our check before.
You know, I'll let you know on Monday.
So we gotta know on Friday if it's ready.
Yeah, yeah.
But I just say if we learn on Monday, then if it's high enough, I really just think of, this hasn't happened before, has it?
I just, this is.
Not to this extent, I guess.
No, and this year there's been more events in that they'll leave this year than there has probably in the last five years. So um, I know that's why it's really never been a topic of conversation and it probably wouldn't have been. Except we've never had somebody likely just say, keep my deposit.
Right.
Right.
So that's why it's kinda like, okay, maybe we need to come up with a plan B, so.
Did they say before the event or after? It's in Friday and then or Saturday?
Friday and they, they started setting up on Wednesday.
Yeah, there was a lot of Friday weddings this year.
Yes.
A lot more than I've ever seen.
Maybe that deposit should go to Bambi since she had to do all the dark cleaning.
Well, no, cause the city ladies had to do the gym part Thursday before work.
Three hours of two people mopping and sweeping the floor.
Yeah, they came and did the gym.
Have you ever thought about hiring somebody to clean it again? Somebody you've hoped for?
Just say how much you want, Ray.
I, I don't know, but it's, it's a thought. I mean, when I went down there before, I was in there every day sweeping and cleaning the bathrooms and on the events, before the event would start, we'd go and take the tables, chairs out, set them in there, but when they got done, set them up, put the carts back in, in the other room. And then on Sunday, we'd go in there and wash all the tables off and chairs that's needed there.
So does Ray want to be the person that does all of this?
I'm thinking about it. I really am.
Do you, how much do you need per hour?
Federally, we have to pay minimum wage.
I'm not, I'm not as mean as Bambi. I'll go ten easy. So you could deal with her or us.
I could do free coffee and. You can mind the situation.
Ray, I would say table it so you can talk around and see how much cleaning people are getting for a while.
No, we need to know tonight, Ray.
And I'm gonna go down there and if, if it comes and if we go down there every day.
Oh, we don't need every day. It's just events.
Once a week probably and every.
But you don't need every week.
That's gonna be the, that's gonna be the difference from what you did before, Ray, is this is just after events.
And maybe once a week.
A week for making them?
Once a week for me.
If that's necessary, so.
I'll be able to check and run, looking back.
I can tell you that the school just hired at thirty or, I think it was thirty for the newest and uh, eight, that's the full time and I think eighteen was, eighteen or twenty was the other ones.
That's up to, up to thirty to forty dollars an hour.
How about thirty?
For house clean.
Do I have a motion for thirty to hire Ray?
You reboot the money.
Why don't you look at their options and bump the deposit?
Well, we could make a motion on the deposit so that, do we have any rentals coming up?
Yes.
September.
We have two in September.
Oh yeah.
Two weddings in September.
Two in September.
And after that, I don't believe.
No, that, no.
Maybe. I don't, haven't looked that far in the calendar yet. I'm only the month.
We can leave it so anything that's already been.
Grandfather did.
I just worried about if we have any coming in.
I have a feeling that the ones that. I have a feeling that the ones that are booked now won't let $300 go.
Would 1,500 or 2,000 make it deterrence enough?
But then you're not gonna have people renting out.
Not for rental, just the deposit.
We hold the check in the office until the event is done for the deposit.
I would have $1,000, but I'm cheap, so. I bought the 300 actually, so I don't like cleaning, but it's whatever you guys want to be, whatever.
I'm just thinking that it's probably gonna cost 1,000 to get a, if we had to hire a crew to come in, it's gonna cost 1,000 to get them to come up here and do it.
I don't think it'll cost 1,000.
I know the other time and everything.
I'm cheap like him. I think 1,000 too.
Well, how many hours did you guys say it took this last time? Three hours of Bambi, six hours of you guys?
That's nine.
So I mean, it's supposed to be prohibitive. We don't want them to do that, is that?
Right. 1,000, 1,500, I don't care. I think that needs to be, we need to get that changed and get the contract reworded as soon as we can.
I'm working on it right now.
All right, we don't have to double pay you.
He's over here clicking.
Something else I would suggest is getting a fire marshal in there to give you a capacity. Because you get close to 500 people in there at an event not too long ago. And I really don't think 500 people were ever supposed to be in that building. It wasn't quite 500, but it was more than 550.
I have 500 if I had my head in there.
You are?
Yeah.
You weren't supposed to have that.
I know.
There was, there was just as many people over there.
Wow. So that was a couple years ago.
I mean, Jamie might be able to do a person per square.
45 years ago?
There's two exits, so.
Yeah, because in the one of the weddings, they had one of the doors.
Doesn't have a fire suppression system up there?
Nope. That is grandfathered in until you make the major updates, then you automatically.
Then you have to put it in?
Yeah, but, um, because like they had exits blocked.
One person per five foot or one person per, how many square feet is it?
I can tell them it's blocked and tiny.
It's basketball court.
But it's, this is just general, but the National Fire Code is 10,000 square feet. Should not exceed one per five, for five square feet. And then it's over 10,000, it's one per seven square feet. Well, do I have a motion?
We can't just bid it out. Put it in the newspaper and see if we can get some responses. Tell them we're looking for somebody to clean, to clean after the, after events in the armory.
I do know three or four companies in town here and I'm kinda curious if they even know about this, this need.
But it's not a guarantee. That's where, are we gonna guaran, you almost, if we're gonna have somebody come in after every event and clean it, then we're gonna have to up the rent. But you're also gonna, because then they're gonna wanna guarantee to come in. But if it's inadequate, then you're gonna have to pay.
But it's gonna be, but I look at it more so it's gonna be, that's what they're bidding. They're bidding, if we need somebody to clean the armory, that's what they're bidding. It's gonna be well worth your time, obviously, because you're gonna have to pay them three bucks an hour, whatever it might be. You know, there's a lot of people out there that might, you know, two, three, four times a year that'd be more than willing to clean the armory for 500 bucks or whatever it ends up being.
But we may have to pay them just to go check on it and say, so that it's clean by Monday morning. Maybe JR and I can work on a bid for the next meeting to come up with then of what we should maybe look at. Anything else on the cleaning then? If not, then on the long-term lease agreement. Which currently we have three and I think we're up.
2026.
26, yes.
What are they asking from us or what do they want?
So.
Because we're good to 26, so what are you?
We are going to be remodeling the kitchen, so we're looking at putting around $55,000 into the kitchen. Also bringing in a new, um, all-inclusive playground that's open to the public to use. So we're looking at a couple hundred thousand dollars on that. And what we're looking for is maybe, maybe longer than just the three years to show that, you know, we'll have a place in 10 years. Could be unknown, make us a little nervous to put that kind of money into like the kitchen if we're not really guaranteed that we could be there in 26. We can't really take the kitchen with us.
How about?
He could kick you out.
Would you be willing to buy it for a dollar?
No.
Fortunately, we can own property. Yeah, we would love that, but we can't own property, so.
Okay.
I have asked many times. So what Jesse's thoughts were, even if you would consider a 15-year lease with the five-year, um, discussions on rent like it is now, is every five years to have that discussion on the rent and if you feel an increase or whatever, but have a long-term lease that says, yeah, for at least the next 15 to 20 years, we will, as long as we own the building, let you stay.
JR, can a contract be indefinite in the fact if it says that as long as they're operating as a childcare center, that they would have the agreement indefinitely with?
We can give our own rights of.
Does that have an out clause?
With an out clause.
Have an out clause?
Plus a, um, every five years renegotiate on cost of rental.
Yeah, we can do that. Go up to 99 years actually for a lease, but we can give them a first right to rent until we're gonna be wanted. It's pretty open.
Is that something the city can afford to do is keep it out of maintained lease for five years at a time? The building's pretty old, so for maintenance, to me, is an issue.
I can tell you that what they're paying is not what it costs us and it has been more than that for a long time. It is a subsidy that the city residents are covering for childcare. Maybe not everybody's childcare, but they are subsidizing for childcare in Hillsborough.
Yeah, because I don't want them to go, but I, I don't want somebody to hit an issue with it costing so much that we're stuck.
Generally, it costs us 50 to 75,000 a year to run that building. We take in.
14,000.
14,000.
Although with the new kitchen upgrade, you can rent the kitchen off caterers now.
We'll have to remember that too, when we put it in, that if you're gonna rent the kitchen, that costs more.
No, you guys can rent the kitchen and make more money.
Well, that's what I mean, when we have the new lease, we'd have to rent, the kitchen would cost more to rent the kitchen.
So there's another stream to be.
And then you get to scrub on it.
Right.
Maybe a lot more than that streaming income to make 70,000.
50 to 70,000, that's like electricity, water.
That's a guess on electricity.
Snow removal.
Because we don't have, we have the meters on there. They're not always counted and so. That was the, in some years, we put air conditioning in that cost us $70,000 or $40,000. And we've had, you know, windows to replace and so it's not, it's just a guess. But what I've seen in our budgets from previous, it's been anywhere in between there. Generally, we have to put 30 to 40,000 a year in to make it fly, so.
On some of the maintenance issues that I mentioned as well, like, you know, obviously as a city, we're supposed to take care of maintenance on that building. So, you know, at the same time, you know, if you keep fixing, I know we're fixing some of them. The windows and the flashing part of it, but, um, yeah, I mean, like long-term, has anybody come up with climate or keeping that building or?
I tried to give it to them for a dollar, but they didn't want it. I mean, ultimately, what else?
What else can be used?
What else, I mean, my understanding is the city got the building, they rented it out for a while to a business. And then that got turned back over to the city. Long enough ago, because Kathy said that's where the steps for the pool were made, is at the armory, so.
We've been there close to 30 years.
Yep, and so that was before then, so that tells you how old their pool steps are now.
Wow.
They were made in 93. That's when my students were there.
Yeah.
New York grad. Which steps are those?
The current steps. The plastic ones go.
Those are over 30 years old.
We just got them.
I saw the bill for them.
Yeah, they weren't cheap. It's all PVC.
Your husband ever look at that room leak to see if it was a roof thing or if it was?
Yeah, he knows too about that.
No, I'm pretty sure I didn't get that one.
Uh, yeah, he said he went up there. There were few, but we're here focused on type of cracks. And they think about the new ones that probably needed to be tarred. He was gonna do it when he did the windows or he was like, the window could be a lot harder anyway, so he's killing it up the car. Something I don't know, Levi, if you're aware of, when those windows were put in, I told Mike right away that they weren't put in right and that he needed to get ahold of the people and get them warranted. And he never like contacted them to do it. So a lot of the problems that you have with the water leaking is because the windows were never put in correctly to start with. And then Mike never followed up with it. Is there some windows you can't lock them because the windows aren't square?
We can look at the same grant that we did for the lights in the gym. We could possibly look at that. There's some efficiency upgrades we could look at for the windows. Because maybe we just, maybe the option is, is that we just need to replace the windows because it's been 10, 15 years?
No, they haven't been that. The windows itself are good. They just weren't installed right.
They're fairly new windows.
They're, they're fairly new windows. I would say they were only put in five years ago, six years ago.
I thought they were longer than that.
No, they're, they're fairly new. It's just like, um, they weren't square when they got put in, so there were gaps. They didn't put the proper flashing around the outside to keep the water from draining in.
Right, but if you're going to replace them or if you were gonna fix them, if they weren't put in square.
Well, yes.
Then the window's not gonna, since it's been sitting for that long, now it's lost, it's, it's not gonna be square. So we end up, we're, now you're just gonna have to replace them to get them where they should be. And fix the flashing and do all that.
Maybe we can get an energy audit done on it and do the grant area.
Right, and that would be the option. I'll work with John on that and see. Because we had talked about doing before this, we talked about putting AC in the gym, which would make it more attractive for rental. And fix the heat in there, because there was an energy grant, the same thing with the lights, that we could have used.
Yeah, Bambi, I just left. I never got an email from her. Yeah, no, the last one I have from you is after you got the vacuum and then I asked about the other.
That's what I appreciate.
The southeast corner, Bambi said it just turned on that one day. They couldn't figure out how to turn it off until they found the breaker. It was all the way on the other side of the building.
So we should talk.
Oh, yeah. Back into one that got to go on the hunt. It took them like an hour to figure out where the breaker was during the year.
What, you wanna guess and reach out to Millers and see if they'll be willing to look at it? Again, Miller and see if he'd be willing to look at it or?
That company that Paul's using.
So we'll get back on task. Do I have a motion for a long-term lease agreement where it would be indefinite based on if they're providing childcare with an outage? Is that what you would like JR to draft? With a renegotiation of rental every three years, five years, however you wanna do that?
I wouldn't say more than three years.
Okay. Do you have a motion to do that then?
What, what was the thought?
Well, instead of reviewing it every five years, do three. Three years instead of five.
Our current is five, isn't it?
Three.
So three.
So you, the only thing you would be negotiating is just the price. The rest of it would be, you're guaranteed to have the building with a clause that if we can't, you can put in arbitration clause that we have to do arbitration so that you're at the same rate until we can come to an agreement. Do I have a motion for that? If that's what you would suggest?
I want a motion to have the indefinite lease with renegotiating the lease every three years.
The price?
Price every three years.
Is there a second?
Indefinite. Did you say indefinite?
Indefinite.
Is there a second?
Second that.
Moved by John, seconded by Nicole. Is there any other discussion on it? That we have a continuous re-lease? And then just negotiate on the rental price every three years?
What do you, what do you want? How long you guys, you said you have, you're putting all this investment into it. So what, what do they want for a long-term? Do they want 10 years?
We were just looking, you know, like a 15 to 20, but we'll take indefinite.
Well, that's where I'm, that's where I'm questioning. I don't know if I wanna go that far, so. I would rather, I'd rather see 15 myself because we don't know what's gonna happen. That's, that's already a money pit over there, so.
We could also add in that they have the first right to purchase if they can find a way or a.
Maybe, maybe you wanna buy it for $1,000 and then you can take it.
Yeah, I can see where Paul's coming from on that one, but I also see too, like, you know, it's a necessity for us to have a date here, but I think they really made a good progress on updating things as they go too, which is putting in the grants that they're supplying, so.
Yep, all the classrooms have been in the last two years have been all painted. He painted the hallways, um, new carpet, new tile. You know, keeping up on the kitchen, making small improvements, but not really big improvement. Um, the playground will be huge because there is no playground on the 29th corner that is an all-inclusive. Any child of any need will be able to play on it, so.
Where's this going?
But with that being said, Bambi, it'd be, you're definitely there too with it to make these upgrades or changes.
Where's the playground going?
The current playground's being taken up from the ones being put in.
So on the same footage?
Yeah, yeah. It, it was supposed to already have happened, but some of the items got delayed, so now they're gonna do it in the spring. We're gonna keep up with it. So, but yeah, it'll be the first of its kind. The school doesn't even have this kind of. So, which is, I mean, our playgrounds are used by the kids all the time, which they're welcome to. Nothing's locked up. So it's just one of those where we're making some pretty big investments inside and outside, so. We're kinda hoping the city would invest in us a little bit.
Is there any other discussion?
Just that I don't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't go. I'd go 15 here.
Do you feel better with 15, Paul?
I don't even feel better with that, but I'll go.
And there's, if the building gets, or is too spending that we don't wanna keep it, we have a way out, yep.
That would be in there that if the.
As long as we have a way out on common.
There's always a way out in the contract.
If the stuff really changes that we can't control.
Correct. The point of it is, is that we, the reason I say this is that this is a way of saying, yes, we need, Babel State's been with us for 30 years. Let's keep it for the next 99 years. Um, we need them.
I will not be there for all of that, but I'll go, I'll maybe give you 10 more.
I don't think we will either, but.
That's my point behind it, but there's. The way JR can write it and he's legal, I know it's possible that there, there's ways for each party to give, but I don't, because we currently have that in the contract now.
So amended, we're making a motion to review the lease every three years or.
The dollar amount, every three years.
Dollar amount for every three years or 15 years with the city and/or MSU having the opportunity with an early release if needed.
So that you're amending it to changing indefinite to 15?
Yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Paul, moved by Nicole to amend the motion, changing indefinitely to 15. Is there any discussion? John?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Paul? Paul?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Yes, for me, motion carries. Is there a motion, the current motion reads that we would offer a fifteen-year lease with renegotiating the price every three years. Is there any discussion on the amended motion? Paul?
Paul's got a question.
Yes.
Is this fifteen years from twenty-twenty?
Correct. Fifteen from twenty-twenty-six.
Okay, perfect.
It'll give us time to get it ready. Which we can sign at any time.
Well, considering that the campus is being dragged, so if it's all being poured out, you may take the layers out, I can get through it.
But, we can sign it before, but it would start in twenty-six.
Okay.
Is there any other discussion? Paul?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Nicole? John?
Yes.
Any yes for me, motion carries.
I think, we just wanna reiterate that, you know, we wanna be really good neighbors and help, so I mean, I know we had the discussion about the cleaning, getting things ready, but I do try to, you know, make sure the bathrooms are good and extra stock and things are presentable and as we quoted to Abby, be their cruise director. But you guys will be back to work in two weeks on Friday, so that, that shouldn't be so bad anymore. You know, we still, we wanna be as helpful as we can and, and work with you guys and assist with whatever to be, you know, even though we're not homeowners in the building, but still be helpful with all the people that are coming in and out and just to be that good neighbor and work with you guys on everything.
Thank you, Bambi.
We appreciate it.
Next item is, tap that special event permit for the armory dance on...
I can't remember the date.
Must be one of the weddings.
I can't remember the date.
September seventh?
There you go.
September seventh.
September seventh? Okay.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the special event permit for tap that. September seventh.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Moved by Paul, seconded by Jason, any other discussion? John?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Any yes for me, motion carries. You have the gaming permit for the Hillsborough Medical Auxiliary. Do I have a motion to approve gaming permit?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Probably moved and seconded for raffle permit. Moved by Paul, seconded by John, any other discussion? Paul?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Any yes for me, motion carries. Is there anyone, or any commissioners that have, that would like to address the commission?
I just, I'm picking on a little clarification. When we hired Colton for the city of Public Works, is he actually public works or is he electrician? I've never gotten a real definitive answer here. And it kind of been a little bit of an issue for Paul Roy to figure out where we're supposed to go. To delegate. Is he city works or is he elected?
He's public works with an electric position.
His primary is public works. Public, and then secondary is...
As long as I need work, he does.
Right.
Right.
Public works.
Yep.
We just were confused. Didn't know where we were supposed to go. Was there a percentage we had on that?
Well, here's my problem, we have a percentage on that, we have Brian, that's supposed to be your second electric guy, that's supposed to be getting his, the friend's hours. He's losing out on the hours that he's getting it, we're giving it to this other guy.
So, that isn't correct, because...
This is correct.
No. They both get hours, is my understa-
Brian is not getting the same amount of hours, he's getting, by the other gentleman is getting hours as well.
If you look at what, when you look into it, and Casey clarified it with me too, is that there is no licensure for electrical linemen. It's basically through the businesses and they look at it based on the hours working for a business. So, they're both working for the city of Hillsborough, which is an electrical lineman, which is an electrical power company.
Correct, I think he has to be working under electrician.
But he has to be working...
Not paid by, work on, inside office. And what we were told by uh, the guy, the other guy, from the...
Maybe for the schooling hours, but...
It sounds like any friend's help work underneath. It's what we were understood.
And see, that's not what we were talking-
Otherwise, if you're shoveling or running the street sweeper, wouldn't it's not giving them electrical experience, but...
It's not giving them electrical experience. I mean, that's, that's what we're trying to clarify, he's not getting hours, he's getting...
My opinion, he was hired to work under the public streets department.
Then why is he making the wage of a, of a journeyman or a lineman apprentice if he's public works?
Good question.
But yes, he was hired as public works primary.
So, I have...
Yes, and if he, and if Roy needs help, then that's where he was supposed to feel like as needed.
But Roy would talk to you and get, if you can free him up.
And that's, we can be very open to each other.
Yep.
It's just fine. But he also didn't know if he was stepping on my toes or about stepping on others' toes, and we don't get that easily among each other. We're very lovely together. But he would never have a part in anything. Truly what we have to do.
Okay. Anything else from commissioner, or from citizen addressing the commission?
Just to, this is on my own. Please don't let it reflect that on Jay. I guess my question is, is if he is public works and you did assign him thirty-three dollars an hour at one of the last commission meetings, you said he was hired for that? How do you justify that when you have other public works that don't make anywhere near thirty-three dollars an hour? If you're looking at your budgets and wondering where some money is going out the window? I mean, it'd be like if you were, had the schooling to be a professor at a college, but you didn't wanna be a professor at a college, you went to a high school. You're not gonna get professor pay. You know, so if he was hired for public works, he shouldn't be getting lineman's pay. I guess that's just how I see it.
I agree with you a hundred percent. I also don't believe that an employee underneath him should ever make more than the supervisor, or I should never make more than my sheriff, that would be completely applying.
Or more than what other people that work there like are making. He's making more than any of the other public works employees. Besides, our lineman makes, of course, you know, our certified lineman makes more, but he makes more than every single other public works employee, whether they're water, roads, whatever. It doesn't make sense to me.
I agree, and I think that is a question for the commissioners that were at the meeting when they hired that person, that is not there.
The one item that would add up that I remember is when they were working on the electrical stuff, we need to have two people. So, we want, we wanted to have three in case one was gone.
We're only required one.
No, but what he's saying is if one was gone.
If you're only required one, Jay could go help all this, that guy needed help.
Absolutely.
That's totally legal. And if you wanna go, should I be a little bit on board with everything you did real quick? You can each of us have, each of us go to a trial, get a one-day trial, a bucket, safety bucket training. And then we never have to get the full shot.
We would have, we would have to rewrite the handbook first.
I have a chance.
But I'm just saying, that's what we, cause that's why, that's where the price come from, is because the way the handbook was wrote, so.
My question-
And I don't have a problem with changing the handbook, don't, I've, I've not really been on board with that either, so, you know, so, but that's a subject for a different time, obviously, so.
My question to the other commissioners to me is, what's your understand, what was your understanding in the meeting when you hired that person? Were you aware that he was gonna get a bump up to whatever he's at now? What is he gonna have?
We were aware that he was gonna get lineman pay.
So, you were aware that he was gonna get paid more to be a city works employer, employee than our city works current employees were and supervisors?
Yes.
Sounds like a terrible idea.
That's why we gotta look at it. Cause we can't pick and choose, I'm assuming? I would like to, but we can't pick and choose what we wanna take out of the handbook?
Well, we'd have to change, we should change the handbook.
Right, right, that's my point.
But otherwise, it's hard for us to go against our own policy.
Right, right.
Anything else?
What do you mean go against your own policy? I mean, if he was hired mainly for public works, the public works states in there that it's seventeen to thirty-five dollars an hour, and thirty-five dollars an hour is like your high-paid person like Jim was paid. So, now you're paying a kid that has had no experience in public works thirty-three dollars an hour, and yet you still have people that have been on your payroll that are making less than that. So, in your handbook, it states that if the city commission is gonna out the wage in one division, they gotta out it for everyone.
But the other point of that is, is that it's thirty, it's, he was hired at eighteen dollars an hour base, and the other part of the handbook says, if you have this certification, electrical apprentice, it's a twenty-dollar increase. Just like when we have, just when we have others that go get their water certification or other things. So, what the, what the commissioners, what I'm hearing is they wanna get rid of all of that, so meaning if we sent somebody to go get a water certification, they wouldn't necessarily get a certain pay increase.
I guess if you had requested the city, if the city commission requested that somebody went to go get that stuff, then yeah, they should still get the increase, but what I'm saying is, just because you're qualif, it's like, like I said, just cause you'd be qualified as a professor and decide to go work in a different position, doesn't mean you're gonna get professor pay. It does not make sense. How do you think your morale will be when all of your, cause all of your, all of the city workers, it's, it's public job, so everybody knows everybody's pay, how do you think morale is when somebody comes in and does that? How would you feel, Levi, if somebody came in and was student teaching underneath you, and then you found out he was making ten bucks more an hour than you?
It's happened.
And then it sucks.
It has.
Why would you allow it to continue to happen when you guys are in control of this? Not to mention when you have a budget that I keep hearing that your budget is tight.
Right.
What are you doing? What is, what is the commission doing? Just because somebody's qualified for something, they're not performing that position at least eighty-five to ninety percent of the time, then they shouldn't be getting that position's pay.
I'm not disagreeing with you, but, you know, we gotta do what the handbook says.
Well, my question is, and simply if we've taken a look at that, if we were thinking about bringing him in as a lineman, to realize that he was gonna get that automatic bump and what it was gonna cause to the rest of the employees that are now not making near what he was, I mean, I wasn't there, I don't know, was that in the discussion even?
Yes.
Like, and everybody was okay with that, saying, hey, we're gonna bring him in for this?
Can I ask you commissioners, why were, why were you okay with hiring a third lineman?
I was under the impression he needed a third.
So, now that you've heard through OSHA standards that you only need two linemen, how are you feeling about this as commissioners?
I don't see why to agree.
And who told you that you needed a third lineman?
I'd have to go back and look, I don't recall exactly.
I guess, I guess I, I was, I was under the impression, I was under the, under the impression-
Do you know the answer?
I, I believe it was stated at, at a previous city commission meeting that Levi Reese was the one that said a third lineman was required. And unfortunately, everybody took that word.
I guess, I guess I don't know the rules for sure, but I was always under the impression that you had to have, you wanted two people when you're working on a job. That's what the impression I was under, so I guess if I'm wrong, I'm wrong.
Martinville guy, there were only two guys, and they're doing like that job.
So, my question goes back to, why did we need to rush the special meeting when we could've taken care of it in no time? Cause I've also heard a rumor that he was already offered a position before he, uh, before that meeting took place.
He was offered a position based on contingent that it was commissioned approved.
Who's making that decision without the rest of the commission? Exactly.
What do you want, Jason?
That's why we're in this.
What do you want me to do?
Stay in your lane. I'm sorry, I, I, I'm saying this as just a citizen in town, but you have overstepped your boundaries on, on every aspect. You, you, you put your fingers in everybody's pie when you, you you ask people what they need and you just go do what you want. And you're, you're costing the city money in a wage of a person that isn't even doing the job. And I just, I just, as a taxpayer, I'm just sitting here going, I'm just shaking my head going, I...
Wendy, would you like this job?
No, I don't want it, Levi, but you have to, you have to be more transparent with your, with your city commission. With your, with your other fellow city commissioners. They were under the assumption that that position was needed, how were they under it? Because of you.
And that was under my assumption, what I learned and what I tried to figure out. I'm sorry, Wendy, that I am doing a horrible job in your opinion.
Levi, don't make yourself a victim here. If you, I mean, I can Google it right now and I can show you OSHA, OSHA wages or their specifications, I have a screenshot right here. Okay, so I mean, don't say you did it because of the best of your knowledge. If I can find it on the internet, anybody can.
The other thing that you should probably take into consideration is how long was the position open? And I had asked public works in our office to try to find somebody. They went, they looked, we waited, we waited, we waited, there was nobody. I also heard from public works that they needed an employee, they really needed more help.
But they didn't need a lineman.
That's who got, that applied. I made best decisions, I put it out there for the rest of the commission, I am one vote. So, don't put this all on me, that it's just my fault.
But it sounded like your commissioners, your fellow commissioners, their votes were because of what you had suggested. They took your furry word, and I guess unfortunately, maybe you guys need to do a little bit more research before you take them for it, word. Now you have a pickle, I mean, you really do, I mean, you're, you're overpaying a, a guy to sit in a street sweeper.
I thought all the staff were to live in Hillsborough, when I hear this gentleman does not.
I'm sorry, but...
Wasn't that part of the requirement? I didn't know that he doesn't even live in North Dakota, I don't believe. So, what do we do about him, Paul?
I don't know, I don't worry about it, I guess I never asked.
I heard Holst.
You've been a Holst.
Are you a Holst?
Is he planning on moving to Hillsborough? Is he planning on moving to Hillsborough?
In that same aspect, Roy doesn't live in Hillsborough, so are we going to...
Yeah, but, but Roy's looking to move to Hillsborough, isn't he?
And...
Roy is working on a... He was, if he hired, he said he had to be in Hillsborough.
And that, that's the difference, is he's looking, you, the other guy doesn't sound like he's looking.
We also had a previous employee that didn't live in Hillsborough.
I just know in the interview that we had with the public works, that question was asked, do I have to be here? And the answer was, you have to be, if you're on call, you have to find a place to stay in Hillsborough for a week. And I feel like this is a conundrum, because then the public works people that are here, are they going to have to pick up for that on-call or have these other employees that are told they need to be here during those on-call times? And that I did, I didn't know, and that, that is on me. I didn't, I didn't know that they didn't live in Hillsborough.
Also, we have an on-call time and say, I think, I was going to point it out, it was 30 minutes?
I don't know what you're talking about.
There's no way you're making it from Hall said, the Hillsborough 30 minutes for this Hillsborough. If you're even making it. That road's terrible in the winter.
Is there anything else? We had one last item that came on the agenda, that came in last minute, and that is from Matt Properties. I don't know that we have to have them on, because there's a big long procedure that we have to do. Unless they have questions. Matt Properties is, or Matt Capital is putting in five homes that they're looking at putting in. And they're asking for us, if those homes do not get bought, then they're planning to change them to rentals. And so, they're requesting for a five-year TIP and a five-year pilot. Is what they're requesting, if it is a rental property.
So, is this going to be something advertised prior? Because I mean, that, that's, that's a lot of homes that could sit out there. And I, I don't, my fear is that even if they, you know, change them to rentals, it's, it's how long do these houses sit? Is there a way we can, I mean, are they going to advertise to see if they can be actually sold before they're built?
I believe that's the goal, correct, Paul?
They're working with...
HGDC?
HGDC.
Well, I don't really know what, I don't really know the final deal here on this. I'm sorry, I know Jim has been texting me about stuff, but...
I mean, my assumption is that it would be advertised, but I mean, my fear is that five homes is a lot of homes go over there, and if they just sit there for a while, you know, how long before they turn to rentals and...
So, the way I would see it is first off, we can't give them a TIP.
Yeah, that's what I was just going to say.
So, it just, it has to be considered a blighted area, and if it was agriculture in the last 10 years, which River Walk, River Walk is, it's within the last 10, TIP just doesn't work. So, move to pilot, same idea, you pay them local taxes, traditionally done a dollar before, such as with Jordal. Has to be revenue producing enterprise, so we'd approve it, that they would actually be able to build it as rentals, and they may sell them in the meantime, is the way I phrase it, just so we can make it work. There is a notice that they have to hold, we'd have to have a hearing here to have it approved, if we were having a deal with Jordal. So, really, just the idea is we want to move forward with that process, so we can get the public feedback, see what the public thinks of this, and have that hearing to see, yes or no.
If, if that's...
Yeah, so we don't have to say yes today. No idea, should we move forward with this, publish, publish that notice, notice to competitors, notice to the public, and then really have a discussion on it. If it's over five years, which it seems to be, they're asking for 10 total, we have to also move aside school and the county, and that they have a right to opt in or opt out of it. So, there's a process, is what I say.
So, but you said there can't be a TIP?
No TIP.
So...
TIP is only for blighted areas, which this does not qualify.
It's this one, okay, so to officially request the TIP and it's up here pilot, so we can't do the TIP?
No TIP, right up here.
Okay.
I won't let you.
And...
They have 10 months, supposed to be there to hearing, or do you need to point them through?
I, whatever it says here, I just read this just as you did. But it looks like it's been in five houses, like two or 10, 10 miles. So, I'm assuming...
So, if we take, if, if they can't do the TIP, we do the five-year, this changes to five instead of the 10, right?
Those are the purchase prices, those individual lots, those are the lot prices, it looks like.
Oh, 10, what was it, 2?
I beg, because they're 50-foot lots, so that's why...
50-foot lots, they must be building it for 100 foot, whatever.
So, they're building one house on two lots?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
That's my guess, but I don't do blueprints, so...
Because they have different addresses here.
Yep, and I think those are the addresses for those individual lots. What I would note though is, I would still, we want to move forward with this, that's the idea, we have to hold a hearing. And we can still talk, you know, we can decide what we do. You have to talk to the city or county.
No.
You have to talk to the school. If they do sell the pilot, it automatically disappears, because a pilot can only be for revenue producing enterprise, AKA rentals. It doesn't work for me, only a home, as John will.
So, what we need tonight is permission to move forward with the pilot. Wouldn't mean, because there is publication deadlines and all this, so it's a long process. That probably won't happen until November, by the time we're done.
Good, yeah, publish notice, all sorts through, yes.
So, all we need to do is just move forward on it, which in the past, the commission has always, if we can offer it, we will move forward on it. It's the same thing we did with the rental properties over at Jordal. We gave them this, if any of them sold, which I don't think any of them did...
I don't think so.
Then...
Are they, so they're, I guess, I don't know, if they were at the meeting or whatever, they're aware that the five-year pilot is only good for the rentals?
Yes.
And I think so, but I can kindly tell them. So, it doesn't work for sale, and I've also known, I'm guessing they're going to use a sale window over here. As if they build them, I don't know when they're going to break ground, I'm assuming next year, they don't sell by winter. I assume they're going to sell it, or they're going to rent it.
Because part of this is HGDC, if it, it doesn't sell, then they get a $20,000 developer fee for each one.
Okay, so just so I understand this, the five-year pilot is if they're rentals.
Or 10-year pilot. I'm assuming they would ask for a 10-year pilot.
Okay, and then, but if they sell them, there's no pilot that can be granted either?
Yep, it disappears because it only works for the applicant as, them as the applicant and as the owner. The second they sell them, it is automatically removed.
But then they can get, the new owner can get a three-year on a 150 or two-year...
150,000, two years.
Two years.
Yeah, so different tax exemption, but not a full tax exemption.
Sure, sure.
That all makes sense?
I, I think so. This is my first time with tips and pilots and...
The main idea today is just you want to move forward with entertaining the idea. If you're in heart set, no, we don't have to, but we're entertaining the idea to get that public feedback, that we just move forward with publication, learn the school and the systems, making sure this is what Matt wants to, and I explain it to him, and then we'll be holding hearings.
And that's just like a public hearing, kind of like what happened with like the development to begin with on the other side anyway?
Yeah, and it's would be, anyone can come and say, anyone in the crowd will say, I'm against this, support this, whatever you have. And then it's eventually...
Okay.
I'll make a motion to move forward. Is there a second?
A second.
Any other discussion? It's probably moved second by Jason, moved by Jason, seconded by Paul. Any other discussion? Paul?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Any yes for me. Motion carries. Is there anything else for the go-to the order?
Did we want it, or were we going to put that up until next meeting, before that reason, deposit for the meeting? Or were we going to wait until...
I think we need to figure out. And we got to figure out, you guys want cleaning costs, and so we got to figure out what we can put it at. Anything else? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Motion is adjourned. Our meeting is adjourned.